Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any addenda, additions, or corrections?
I may add, council, I don't have any additions or corrections. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Dave, to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Motion carries. Implications from faithful Lutheran church. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Pastor Pillman for faith and for church. Let us pray. Gracious, merciful, and holy God, we give you thanks for this community of Hutchinson. We thank you for all the ways we benefit from living together, for medical resources, fire department, police department, businesses and industries that serve us and enrich our lives, and for our churches that lead us to stay connected to you. We thank you for these people before us tonight, mayor, council people. We ask you to guide them, to give them your wisdom and to make good judgments and decisions that bring your benefits to all residents of this city through their work. Lead them to facilitate good fiscal programs and good decisions in all other areas which affect residents, employers, and businesses. Open their eyes and ours to your will and your wishes for us so that everything we do and design may bring honor and glory to you as our God of love and peace, and so that we are motivated to care for each other. This and more we ask, in the name of your son and our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nation of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Already, we have a proclamation underneath there. One book, one community. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes connecting citizens and individuals in common purpose is powerful means of building a stronger community. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes strong community create a stable and supportive society. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes citizens of all ages who feel a sense of belonging tend to lead a happier and healthier lives. Whereas the city of Hutchinson recognize one book, one community, choice of Kerry J. Griffin, Gunflint Falling, Blow Down in the Boundary Waters expands the sense of community through a wide-range discussion. Therefore, I, Gary Ford's here, mayor of Hutchinson, Minnesota, do proclaim the month of January two thousand twenty-five as One Book, One Community Month. Mary, you want to talk a little bit about it?
Hi, I'm Mary Hankey from the Hutchinson One Book, One Community and Hutchinson Connects committees. Gary, thanks for recognizing our community book read program with your mayor's proclamation. This is our twelfth year of doing this in Hutchinson. The goal is to build connection among people in our community by the shared experience of reading and discussing a book together. We found a sweet spot after the holidays and during the long winter months when people have extra time on their hands. Friends, family, neighbors, and coworkers with this program can get together, read a book, and discuss it. In the news today, issue of loneliness and effects on our health and well-being, as Gary mentioned in the proclamation, is being brought up more and more. And we found that this is an effective way for people at kind of a dreary, slow time of the year to connect with each other in a way that they can share an experience together. Over the years, we've read and then shared a wide range of books during the winter months from a historical novel about the orphan trains of the late eighteen hundreds in the mid- to the Midwest, to a Washington, D.C.'s reporter's account of moving his family to Red Lake Falls after calling it the worst place to live in the United States in an article that he wrote. We try for variety in the type of books selected so that we can appeal to different reading preferences. One thing in common, though, is that the books all have a Minnesota connection. Usually, it's the author is a Minnesotan, or maybe the topic. For example, that Washington, D.C. reporter who happens to still be living in that area has, was writing about a Minnesota community. And if they have a Minnesota connection, our programs will qualify for Minnesota Legacy Grant. And so we can be bringing in state dollars to cover these expenses, the author visits, publicity, any other expenses we have. And this year's book, Gunflint Falling, Blow Down in the Boundary Waters, is written by a man named Kerry Griffith. And it's a story of a damaging windstorm on July fourth, nineteen ninety-nine. I don't know if anybody is familiar with that.
Yeah.
But what he's done is he's, that's the storm that took, devastated a large path through the Boundary Waters canoe area. And so he's gathered his stories from those who were on the ground before, during, and after the storm. And Kerry will be joining us for a meet the author event at the end of our program, which ends on April twelfth. And he'll be speaking at the museum, and he's going to be bringing a PowerPoint presentation. He has a lot of photos and maps. And there'll also be, before then, a community book discussion that's open to everyone in the community. So if somebody doesn't have a group that they've been able to connect with and discuss the book, they can come to this open one, or if they just want to talk about the book more. So we're able to use a depot for that. This has been funded by the Minnesota Legacy Grant. The friends of the local Hutchinson Public Library also give us money. And Thriving, we always apply for a Thriving grant, so we can do a lot with money coming in and with grants. And we also partner with Hutchinson Public Library. The Hutchinson Station newspaper gives a lot of publicity to this. I don't know if you saw, Kay did a huge article on the front page, and people, and like when I was a librarian, they would always say, how do you get so much publicity? And I said, you just have to have someone that likes to read, likes libraries, and gets excited about this stuff. And so books are available at the library. You can check out, we have a lot of copies of the book for people to check out individually. But there's also something that the library puts together called a book club kit. And so if you do have like a group of coworkers, or family, or neighbors that want to read the book together, the library gets a tote, buys twelve copies of the book, puts them in the book. And so instead of checking out the twelve copies individually with individual people, you just check out the kit and take it and use it and bring it back. So it works out really well. There's also copies on sale in the community at the Center for the Arts and then the McLeod County Museum. It's also very available online, like any Amazon or any bookstore online. I've left a copy of the book, Gunflint Falling. There you go. And for the staff and city council to either read, use, share, whatever, it's your copy. So I hope you can, if you're interested in it, it's a real good read. One thing that really struck me was the way the local people, the businesses, the county commissioners, the mayor, everybody, all had a plan, and they worked together. And the way that they worked together just was really impressive. You know, when you hear about groups kind of not moving smoothly together, this, this whole process, they didn't lose a single person in that whole, whole event. And they think, estimated, there were about ten thousand people that were there scattered throughout the whole area. So it's quite a story. Anyway, just thank you very much for supporting this program and helping us get the word out. And if you want to learn more about it, you could call the library or One Book, One Community Facebook site. So thank you for your time. I saw you had a full list agenda, so I'm gonna leave you to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for council members, like I said, years past, we've always gotten a book from them. We do keep it in our library here, and council members have checked it out, and all we just do is ask that you give it back. So if you do want to read it, we do have that copy. You can easily make it accessible to you.
Thanks again, Mary. All right, we have a couple of resolutions underneath there. I think I'll do them one at a time here because they are donations. So we have resolution number one, five, eight, two, three. Resolution accepting cash donation from Culver's Hutchinson Village Ranch and Hutchinson Elk Lodge for Fireman's Park project.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. And we have resolution number one, five, eight, two, four. Resolution accepting cash donation from the Blue Line Club for improvements to the Birch Arena Boys Locker Room.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. We have resolution number one, five, eight, two, five. Resolution accepting cash donation from the Village Ranch for the Hutchinson Police Department, future equipment purchases.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. Uh, citizen.
Mayor, I just want to first of all acknowledge and thank all those donations. You know, I added up quickly. It's just over fourteen thousand dollars, which in the grand scheme of things, may not mean like a lot, but when you look at the various different departments that's going into, every little bit helps with something. I'm sure Chief Schuman would gladly speak to what they've used to help improve Fireman's Park. I know Chief Kiverson can talk about, you know, all the monies that have been donated over the years to help with equipment. Obviously, it helps, you know, taxpayers, or even, you know, from Blue Line Club to help at, you know, the ice arena. And so, like I said, I don't, we don't take those donations lightly. And just wanted to thank all those various different groups and the impact it does have. Even if it's as small as a thousand, two thousand, that can go a long way for the various different programs that we offer here at the city.
So I wanted to do them separately.
Yep.
I really appreciate everybody's donations. All right, citizens addressing council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, we have Google minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and organizational meeting of January second, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Will say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with the one motion unless somebody throws something off for discussion. D is consideration for approval of the two thousand twenty-five license renewal for Chen's Catering and Sweet Treat Food Truck. We have boards and appointments and reappointments. We have appointment of Kathy Hoshstrom to the senior advisory boards to January of two thousand twenty-eight. Appointment of Susan Kosner to the senior advisory board till January of two thousand twenty-eight. And a reappointment of Johnny Block to the EDA Board to December two thousand thirty. C is approval issuing temporary liquor license for the Hutchinson J.C.'s on January thirty-first at two thousand twenty-five at Arts Place. D is approval of issuing short-term gambling license for the Crow River Cutters on February eighth, two thousand twenty-five at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. E is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Crow River Cutters on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-five at the Hutchinson Elks Club. And F is claims appropriations and contract payments, register A. Anything anybody wants pulled out?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda one.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat, to approve consent agenda one. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. Claims appropriation, contract payments, register B. My son has a check on there for his business, so I'll abstain from voting.
Motion to approve consent agenda two.
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. We got a little time left here, so Candace, we have the Hutchinson Liquor Hutch Year End Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight with just a short report of what's happened at Liquor Hutch in two thousand twenty-four.
We've got thirteen minutes to our public hearing, so you gotta, you can take some time.
Make it short. Make it short. Okay, so we'll start with our sales history. This gives you our sales starting when we did the expansion remodel at Liquor Hutch. You can see that it's been a nice increase along. Two thousand twenty, of course, was the pandemic year, so we jumped up at that point, but we continue to increase. This slide shows you our comparison of sales in two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-three. You can see in two thousand twenty-four, we did in sales seven million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars, which was a three percent increase over the previous year. In those increases, you can see a four-point-four percent increase in liquor sales, a pretty much flat year in beer sales, and a two percent decrease in wine sales. These numbers really mirror the national trends. This is what's happening all over the nation. A lot of people are going, moving from wine into the categories of ready-to-drink products that are actually liquor-based. So it's something we've been watching, something we've been closely watching our gross profits because of, because wine actually is a higher gross profit item than liquor. So we've had to really carefully manage our gross profits in this year. And you can also see in THC, this was our first full year of sales, and we did one hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven fifty-one. That actually, although it doesn't seem to represent a large sales number, it's in gross profit dollars, it's about sixty-one thousand dollars, so it's significant. Our customer counts continue to increase, oh, two percent, and our average sale per customer went up twenty-five cents. Compared to how we budgeted for the year, we barely squeaked in our sales. December was kind of a challenging month. We were holding our breath, honestly, at least I was. But we did make a slight increase of point-three percent more than we had budgeted, so we did make much budget. We did manage, though, to increase our gross profits by five-point-six percent over what we had budgeted. And that means that we will have no problem making our transfer of five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the general fund. In addition to that, we did a remodel on our cash registers this year, wraps, counters, and cabinets. We will be able to pay for that out of this year's budget instead of using accumulated funds with the profits that we've seen this year. As I said, two thousand twenty-four was a little bit scary. Holiday sales were very much impacted by the calendar. We had one week, one less week between Thanksgiving and Christmas, which doesn't seem like a big deal, but a week of sales for us is a significant number. And then also, we had the midweek holidays, which changed people's buying patterns. So it was a little bit of a scary December, but we made it. Our general fund transfers since two thousand and six, we've transferred over eight million dollars into the general fund. And in two thousand twenty-four, we will be transferring five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Some of the trends, I already talked a little bit about. Liquor sales continue to increase, led by ready-to-drink products. Beer sales continue to be flat, with craft beer showing a little decrease. Wine sales are decreasing over all the different categories. And all these changes that we're experiencing are following national and state trends. So there's nothing, you know, that we're really doing to affect these things. It's just how people's drinking patterns have changed. We continue to see the low ABV and non-alcoholic products sell well. We're planning to do a bit of a reset to increase some of those products to follow that trend. And Facebook, Instagram, direct email, and also our Liquor Hutch website are most effective advertising tools. If you haven't been on LiquorHutch.com, you should take a look. All of our events are on there, all of the in-store tastings. It's pretty easy to navigate. And we do have a lot of people coming into the store using it to pre-shop, along with the fact that you can order right there online. It's at LiquorHutch.com. And again, THC sales are increasing. The customer base is gaining, gaining knowledge about those products and discovering our selection. So we expect to see a good increase in that area in two thousand twenty-five. Some of our successful ongoing promotions. Our loyalty program continues to be really successful. Customers love it, and it is showing increases in our average sale per customer. We continue to do the fifteen percent off crafted import beer on Thursdays. That's a very successful program. Our online purchasing, that website that I just spoke of, holiday sales on items that we featured in so, social media. One of the things we did this year was a Black Friday deal on gift cards. So if you bought a gift card on Black Friday, you got double loyalty points. That was quite successful. We're doing a lot of multiple buys in the store, where you get a discount if you buy three for thirty instead of fifteen dollars each, that kind of thing. We do a number of tasting events in-store and off-site. And last year, we had four different bourbon barrels chosen specifically by our staff that was, were then bottled, and then we sold through those barrels. So that's very successful for us also. In two thousand twenty-five, some improvements that we're looking at and that we have budgeted for. We're planning to update the flooring in the wine department, so replace all the carpet that went down in two thousand six. So it's definitely time. It's a huge project. If anybody wants to help move bottles of wine, you're welcome. Yes, we have to clear that entire floor area.
I'm sure if you offered some free tasting as we work out, probably you could shoot your volunteers.
Yeah, maybe. And then we're planning a refrigeration update to the important crack cooler. Some challenges and goals for the coming year. We always want to manage our labor to sales. That's, labor is with most businesses, it's the major expense for us. So our goal is always to manage that. In the past, that number, that percentage has gone up significantly as labor costs have gone up for everybody. So now our goal is twelve percent. And we'd like to increase our gross profits to twenty-six-point-five percent. This year, we ran at twenty-six percent. Inventory management, as I spoke about wine, the sales are going down, which means that we are not seeing the trends in the wine department that we would like to see. And in order to do that, we need to refine our selection and reduce the inventory that we're carrying in wine. Again, you just have to follow the trend. The trend is wine is down and liquor is up. So you follow the trend with the inventory you have on hand. The beer inventory is, the sales are pretty much flat. So our goal there is to try to increase our gross profit. And to do that, we need to make changes to our cooler space every year. We do a lot of analysis of what's selling, what's not selling, what position it should be in in the cooler, you know, whether it's on the handle, the door handle, so it's easily accessible. There's a lot of stuff that goes into that. And transaction counts and number of products sold. So we started tracking these in two thousand and twenty-four. We've always tracked our transaction, transaction counts, but we also started tracking the number of products that we sold on any given day. And we want to make sure that those counts don't flatten out to a great degree. So far, we're still running at about a two percent increase in both. But there's always been concerns about the store location. We're not really included with the major retail area of town, I guess you'd say. And there's also concerns with legal, legalized cannabis and what that may do to liquor sales. So we want to make sure that we're watching those trends and making appropriate decisions. Thirteen minutes? Did I make it?
Got a couple more for questions. No, it looks good. Good work. Thank you.
Well, thank the staff at the liquor store. They do a great job. They really do. We're really fortunate.
Starts at the top. The THC is a huge benefit, whether you're on board or not. You said, Candace, the margins are much better, which makes up for some of that wine loss, you know. And I don't know, man, I mean, twenty-twenty-six, are we even going to see dispensaries yet, the way they're riding their feet? So I mean, I think that's a good thing for the municipal.
I heard some in the day where they were talking about how they're looking early twenty-twenty-six, and so, you know. You know, they were saying early twenty-twenty-five, so I think we're at least another year out based on, I mean, they haven't issued any permits yet, so.
I think it was either Michigan or Ohio that passed their law six months after us. They've had dispensaries open this whole year.
I would say we're probably not the lead example of how to do this, so. Candace, with that being said, I know you sat in a lot of those meetings and kind of put you in the spot here. Is there anything you want to share just about, you know? You know, people have asked me, and the city has explored the option of a cannabis store, but I think you and I both kind of have the same conclusion that it's.
Yes. The process, of course, is very complicated and convoluted. The state really doesn't have everything put together, so it's difficult to make final decisions. So I'll continue to sit in on those meetings. But to date, the expense involved in meeting the requirements to put a cannabis distill, or dispensary together is, is pretty prohibitive. And also, the fact that at one point, we thought that municipal, we could have a municipal cannabis dispensary, just like we have a municipal liquor store. That did not pan out in the way that the law was put together. So at this point, we can have a municipal cannabis store, but we would also have to issue a license to, to a private individual in the community. So whether or not the city would want to compete with a private individual is another question. Especially now, if you're going to have two dispensaries, even within the county, and, and both dispensaries have a lot of expense. The security systems that are involved in these buildings are extremely expensive. The liability insurance is very expensive. The staff training, the, even just the labor costs are going to be high. It just, it doesn't feel to me like it's, the way that it is currently set up, it would be a good decision for the city to get involved.
I know there was a lot of cities that were exploring it, and I think through this meeting, the League of Minnesota Cities did a good job of kind of coordinating this.
Yes.
It's interesting to see the amount of cities that have now said, we're not going to be pursuing this. There's a couple that are still looking at it, but I, I think Candace did a good job of kind of summarizing that. I mean, if, you know, the council's kind of said, we don't think we're interested. I think you're looking at probably a multi-million dollar investment to do it. And I think the difficult thing at this point is figuring out what that rate of return would be on that investment.
It's very difficult to, to understand that at this point. I think the cities that are still interested are metro area cities, and, you know, they have the population base. So if they, if you're within a county and you become the dispensary within a metro area, you have a much better return on. you have a much better return on investment than we would have here.
Candace, there's been some dis- discussion about a second location in the, you know, the more uh, commercial area on the south end of town. Have you explored that or are we even looking at the future of that? And would it be, well, where do I want to use? Uh, a lucrative, yeah, you know, we can look at cannabis or we can look at what we're good at right now and.
Right, um.
Go ahead, Candace, we've talked about it, so.
We have. Um, we have not formally explored it at this point, I would say that. Um, I do think it's worth exploring. I do think it's worth discussion. I think um, in two thousand twenty five, two thousand and six, twenty six, we could get serious about it so that we do understand exactly, you know, where we're at. Um, back in two thousand four, two thousand five, we did very seriously uh research that. We uh hired a consultant and did the market analysis and basically the you know, result of the market analysis was that the liquor store could be more profitable in that retail area on the south side of town. Um, but there was redevelopment planned, downtown redevelopment plan in place. And the decision was to keep the store downtown as kind of an anchor to the downtown area. I think that would also still be a consideration, like, you know, that's going to be a consideration.
You may recall with our recent downtown study, um, the market analysis did acknowledge how much of an attractor the liquor store is and how much, and how really a big impact that does have on the downtown area. And so I think that's that, that balance that we have to consider, so.
But you know, there are numerous cities, a lot of them are metro, but even outstate that have multiple locations.
And that's what I would advocate for. I would never say we should leave downtown. Um, but I would advocate for a second location in that retail area.
I think it's something we should really look at because it's just the sheer traffic volume out there.
Yeah.
And I don't want, you know.
Get the highway traffic.
Chad, you've got a business downtown. I don't want to take away from that. I think you could.
Exactly.
Were there be more expenses? Absolutely. But I think you could offset those, the increase in business, we'll be able to keep the one down here.
Sure.
Well, that's why you would need a serious market analysis, you know? But how long ago was that? Eighteen years ago? Uh, that analysis was pretty clear. And that was leaving one location downtown and having a second location. Um, at that point, if we were gonna stay in one location downtown, uh, the analysis was that we would max out at six million dollars in sales in the next twenty years. And we're almost eight. So I think what we have done has been pretty effective, but it hasn't been easy. It hasn't been easy. We've worked it really hard to get there.
Anything else for Candace? I think that's a conversation Candace and I can have, um, but appreciate that feedback, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Candace. Have a public hearing.
Okay, wake up.
Here, also, it'll take me a minute or two, uh, just to get my screen set up. So if you wanna uh come a couple of the other business items, yeah, so.
That'll give me a second here to get this set up. Hopefully we do have uh, actions on the utility commission minutes from November twenty seven, two thousand twenty four. And Liquor Hutch quarterly reports. How long is it gonna take him, Mike? A little bit longer?
If you want to go through staff updates.
Tom, you got anything for us tonight?
I don't.
All righty, Candace, anything else or are you done talking? Mark, you got anything for us? All righty, Tim, let's start with you.
Well, we haven't had any of the committee meetings as of yet. I'm sure they're coming up here uh at more towards the end of this month. Uh, the sustainability committee, of course, we're, you know, gonna have some change there. And we'll see the direction that it goes with new leadership coming on board and and that's going to be an issue uh, as we move forward, especially with the south end water quality, uh, water drainage and all that coming into effect. And uh, I I guess the comment I'm gonna make right now is I'm really appreciative of the past and present uh with seeing and and we're having some issues in our national issues with fires and and natural disaster and to know our community has the proper equipment and and stands behind our public safety uh, to make sure that, you know, we need to be cognizant of moving forward, that we prepare as any community would with making sure that we have good fire departments, police departments, wastewater, that we're water supply, all that. And we need to be diligent in that because we're seeing failure and uh, so that would be what I'd have.
Dave?
Nothing specific this evening. Again, meetings coming up toward the end of the month, so be more next time.
All right, Eddie. Pat?
Uh, we had a public arts, I think the most important meeting they have all year, and that's choosing the new uh, statues or the new um displays for the upcoming years. We choose eleven, there's thirteen total. Um, and two of whom are picked by, one by Citizens Bank and one by the uh Ridgewater. But we were able to pick them all, sent out the invites. And last year we had quite a few that had conflicts and we had to kind of re- redraw and re-meet. This year, everybody said they would have them here. And we had people from New York, a couple entros, yeah, the less entries but more uh diversity, I would say. So, and you always have repeat people too. It's a great meeting and it's kind of, I mean, it's it's just a great thing to be looking forward to. The old ones coming down, sculptures and the new ones going up in May. Usually that's about the time they get put up, so. So we got.
All right, Chad?
Parks board meeting, but pretty slow time of year for them. Um, the weather was a challenge over Christmas for the ice rink, the outdoor one, but it's gotten cold since then, so hasn't been a problem. Other than that, it was a pretty slow meeting.
Matt?
Uh, just a reminder, city offices will be closed Monday for the Martin Luther King Junior holiday, so.
Um, talked about the, the Creekside. Should we set a meeting for that, Matt, in case?
When is that?
January twenty second.
I thought you said the twenty sixth.
Hold on, I've got it on my.
I don't know.
I would say just let me know, um, if you're gonna go. I I have to, I'm not completely familiar exactly with what she's doing, so. Also, I can send something out and if you want to go, we can always just post something. Mayor, you can do that, so.
Tim, Tim kind of said that he, like, the council would be there, so.
So what day is it for sure?
Hold on, I've got it, right?
Wednesday if it's the twenty second, twenty second.
I'm not sure.
She gets January twenty second, five to six P M. at the City Senate Council Chambers. You have to RSVP by Monday, January twentieth. She's providing updates on the compost at Wright program with allies in building and establishing a framework for promoting compost programming and messaging. Uh, it it's basically a update on what they've been doing since they've had that granted position and where we are in the composting, so.
I mean, if you want to, you could. I'm I'm sure, I haven't talked with Andy yet, it might be something she comes and gives an update with here at the city council. But when they, his annual report to the council is actually our next meeting. And so, you know, I I would say, I would, if you want to go, that'd be great. Um, but we can also have her come in and and do that same thing here at the, with the city council, so.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
I said, if the majority of your plan ain't going, let me know and we can get that posted. So I don't know if we need to necessarily set that right now, so.
All right, I was just wondering about that.
Sure.
Otherwise, yeah, I haven't had any other meetings either, so. Um, Mike, you got any update before we go to the public hearing?
You know what, um, you know what, real quick, I'll mention, uh, again, we've had a relatively, maybe not mild winter, but uh rather snow-free winter and uh, it's allowed us to, uh, again, stay very aggressive on tree trimming. So we've been very busy with that. But other than that, um, the few events we've had have gone very well, so.
Uh, I had a citizen come and ask me about a public landing on Campbell Lake.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, chat about that maybe here at the end, or do you want to say a little bit about it as far as what's?
Yeah, I don't know. He just asked if if the, I would, I kind of said I thought it would be the D N R that would do that.
Be my guess, but we can do a little checking, you know, just to get some guys, do you have a name, number, uh, for someone that I can follow up with as far as the resident goes?
Wayne at the Citizens Bank, he just moved on Illinois Street. And he said that he'd like to have a boat landing.
You know, I will say it's, you know, both from our Lakes River Basin project, a study. You know, we identified the need for additional landings. Um, it is a combination of having to work with the the D N R to get some of those approvals and there are some monies out there. So it's things that we looked at, but I would say it wouldn't hurt for Mike to to connect and we can at least explore that. It's kind of one of those, you know, list of priorities of what we've identified, so, but might not mean there's not an opportunity there, so.
Yeah, yeah, and if not immediately in the future, we have a Lakes Rivers meeting on Thursday, so um, you get some additional context then, so.
All righty, um.
All right. Jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, well, good evening, mayor and council. Um, this project previously has been called the Uptown Grand, Uptown Commons. Um, right now we're calling it the Franklin, um, really Franklin Street Franklin Site Improvement Project. We have two resolutions um for your review and consideration tonight, um, and looking at this project. And what I'm gonna present is is probably the the worst-case scenario in terms of overall cost and as far as impact and things go. Um, this is, the site, as you probably know it, uh, that contained the homes. Of course, the homes last year, um, had been removed and so the site is generally open and available at this point. Uh, the green lines on the uh three streets basically represent what has been thought to be the kind of general scope of the project in that we would redo the utilities in those streets, redo those street surfaces. And then the red dash line that kind of bisects the property, um, would remove that existing sewer. Um, and televising that, looking at the utilities, um, again, surveying the street conditions themselves. We've got three relatively good streets. Um, the sewer line itself is in really pretty good condition. And so we are exploring not only with the developer, that would probably be the preferred method, is actually have them take on the project uh, and coordinate it with their building design and overall site, one mobilization, et cetera. Or a lower cost option for us to run kind of to the north of the project. Um, as you see the pond kind of put in here in that uh oval, um, we do think there's the potential to reroute that sewer line to the north, staying away the fifty feet that's required from the shore. But to be able to kind of run that line through there and then basically preserve those road surfaces. So again, what I'm gonna present tonight would be kind of a worst-case scenario. Again, the preferred method would be to work with the developer and likely have them coordinate with potentially a contribution back from the city. Or three, we would take it on, but want to explore this um other alternative as far as a project goes. Um, and we'll know more in these coming weeks. We met with the developer last week, had a good conversation and uh we'll continue to uh pursue that. So we may be back in time with um kind of a revised notion. But right now, we're pursuing this as kind of our third letting. We've presented two um late in two thousand twenty four. Those are getting ready to go out for bid. This one would lag that and uh go out here sometime in February, uh, but we hope to know more. So again, as we're presenting tonight, it would be more of a reclaim of those three street surfaces, abandoning the the uh sanitary. Um, that bisects the property is noted, constructing the stormwater pond, which is kind of shown here. Um, again, that has to go on those three sites, um, where those homes were, those were bought out with FEMA dollars. And um, any future building cannot go on that um actual site or those three sites. So um, just kind of a reminder of that. And then a fourth element of an overall project here, and this is one we'd probably do regardless of a developer or not, would be to stabilize the river bank. Um, that's a project that uh we will likely do here this spring. And so there'll be a segment of this project we would likely look to coordinate um in any, in any uh scenario. Um, the finances of it, um, again, is kind of a worst-case scenario. Um, construction, engineering, admin cost of just shy of a million dollars. Um, our project funding would generally be um bonding. Um, again, this would fit in our overall scenario, um, if we did need to go this route. A pretty heavy contribution from stormwater, um, some water, um, quite a bit of sewer and then some very modest assessments. We have two properties, um, that would basically on the east side, um, of the of the overall project um, kind of next to our two parking lots, municipal parking lots there, two properties, we'll have an assessment um in that regard. So that is our project estimate and consideration. So I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
That's the worst-case scenario, correct?
That's the worst-case scenario. And even if we were to look at, again, coordinate or work with, we'd be looking at probably a project more in the five fifty, um, five hundred and fifty thousand dollar um neighborhood, um, would be kind of an early estimate. What we're trying to figure out is, and I should mention here this alleyway is where the duck bank for Nuvera's, um, fibers, fibers for the north end of town. Um, and as that dives, as it goes under the river, so on the very north end of the project, um, that depth and our ability to get a sewer line under it, over it, that depth is is kind of the critical part of do we have the ability to get over, under and still meet grade that we need to then connect on the east end of that property? So um, that'll kind of determine whether a north route um would work for us. And then again, the developer and where they want to place their building is going to be a critical element too. So working with Nuvera, working with the developer, um, as to um what some possibilities are there. We do think there's a a great way of doing it, but we want to make sure uh to do it. So they're a little bit tricky on the overall site, but uh we do think there are some options.
Yeah, the whole, Mike. Pulsing it up for public comment?
Make a motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, who's their name? Motion carries. Uh, we have resolution number one five eight two six, resolution ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specifications and resolution number one five eight two seven, resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
And I just want to note for the council, as Mike noted, this could change, but this really allows us to kind of keep at least moving forward. So with the potential of a summer start date on construction, we want to at least have everything moving to where if we have to get in there and do something, we're we're prepared to do that. So um, just in case you were maybe wondering about that, like I said, this is more or less just to give us those options of flexibility, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion?
Both of them, right, so.
Both resolutions. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's their name? Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Anything else, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay, motion carries.